All right, thank you for your attention so early. We appreciate that. We're going to open our board meeting here at 7:00 PM. Call to order, declaration of a quorum. Six members present, one absent. Welcome to this meeting of College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance, and we have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We've just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you have taken time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school district. We thank you for your interest in and support of our students. Brings to item C, recognitions, Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Horak and board members. This evening, for our pledges and our moment of silence, we have students from Pecan Trail Intermediate and Welborn Middle School going to assist us this evening, and I ask that Ms. Brittany Kane, Assistant Principal at Pecan Trail, and Mr. Jeremy Stewart, Principal at Welborn, come forward with your students and introduce these young people.
Good evening. So, we have two students from Pecan Trail, both sixth graders, that are so excited to share a little bit about themselves and an upcoming fine arts program. So, we have Barrett Norman and Zoe Ferguson to tell a little bit about themselves.
Hi, my name is Barrett Norman, and I am in the sixth grade at Pecan Trail. And my favorite thing about being in Shrek Jr. is probably to hang out with friends when I am offstage or not performing. And some other things that I do also like at Pecan Trail is definitely the games we play in PE, and that's it.
Hi, my name is Zoe Ferguson. I'm in sixth grade at Pecan Trail. My favorite thing about being in Shrek Jr. the Musical is that I get to experience like a new opportunity through the school. And at PT, I also love meeting different types of people and teachers. Thank you for having me.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Jeremy Stewart. I'm the principal at Welborn Middle School. I've got two wonderful Warhawks who are going to introduce themselves, talk a little bit about their house teams, and then lead us through our pledges this evening.
Hello, my name is Rendell Pollard, and I am an eighth grader at Welborn Middle School. I am the house team leader of Navita, the House of Involvement. Some things we like to do as house team leaders, we plan together and we have competitions, and we like to know our seventh graders. Thank you for having me tonight.
Hello, my name is Carly Song, and I am an eighth grader at Welborn Middle School. My favorite thing about being a house team leader is that I can, you know, know the seventh graders, and yeah, I'm a house leader of Odysia, the House of Compassion. I'm also involved in athletics, orchestra, and my favorite subject is science. Thank you for having me here this evening. Will you please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
And now, the Texas flag. Honored the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Please remain standing for the moment of silence.
You may now be seated.
Hey, guys, come on. Wait, y'all were in Shrek Jr.? Can you give us a scene real quick? No, I'm kidding. That's all right.
He was ready.
Right? Okay, we have some student recognitions this evening, and Mr. Glenn Wickel is going to help us out with this portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale. Mr. Horak, members of the board, guests in the audience, it is again my pleasure to be able to recognize, help recognize a group of students who have competed and won on the national and state levels. And so, I'm going to start, and as we get going through this process, when you hear your name called, come forward over there to Ms. Horn and Mr. Martindale, receive your certificate. Parents, feel free to come up and take any pictures you'd like to take as well. We're going to start with the A&amp;M Consolidated High School Vet Science Team. They placed second at the national competition. That's the national competition, held in conjunction with the 95th National FFA Convention and Expo in Indianapolis. The team won the state competition last spring to earn the opportunity to compete at nationals. In FFA contests, there are no classifications like there are in UIL. Regardless of school size, every team in the nation competes against each other. These events build on what is learned in agricultural classes and encourage members to put their knowledge into practice. When I call your name, please come forward to receive your certificate and to be recognized. Abigail also finished as the eighth high point individual in the nation. And the third highest scoring individual in the nation, Luke Sanders. This team is coached by A&amp;M Consolidated High School Career and Technical Education Teacher Hannah Lewandowski. From CTE, we're going to move over into the Fine Arts Arena. We're going to recognize some Allstate...oh, hold on, we'll wait. We're going to take a picture here.
Mr. Wallace wants a group picture.
Come on, absolutely. What am I going to say? No? All right, so Fine Arts, we're going to recognize some Allstate Band and Choir members this evening. Total of nine students from A&amp;M Consolidated and College Station High Schools were recently selected to perform with the Texas Music Educators Association, Texas Allstate Band or Allstate Choir. These students were chosen for this prestigious honor through a competitive process held this year across the state at district, region, and area levels. Allstate is the highest honor a Texas music student can receive. Earlier this month, Allstate students participated in three days of rehearsals and performances directed by nationally recognized conductors during the TMEA Clinic and Convention. When I call your name, please come forward to receive your certificate and be recognized. The AMCHS Band Director is Mr. Steve Fry. And the College Station High School Band Director is Mr. John Seal. Allstate Choir Members, Ashton Jaspersen. And the AMCHS Choir Director is Ms. Emily Ramos. Takes a lot of time and effort for these students to get to the place with their talent, and if you're a parent, guardian, grandparent of any of these students, please stand up because you had a lot to do with this as well and be recognized. Mr. Martindale, Mr. Horak, that concludes our recognitions for the evening. Going to let everybody shuffle out today. Give everybody a moment. All right, that'll bring us to item C3. We'd like to recognize the artwork there at the back of our boardroom from the Pecan Trail and Welborn Middle kiddos, so make sure you take a look at that before you leave and see what great artists we have in our district throughout those two schools here. That brings to item D, D1, Board Report. Who would like to go first?
I'll start with the District Education Improvement Council met on the 8th and received a superintendent's update. A lot of that, of course, dealt with the VOK Architects Facilities Assessment that we heard about at the workshop this evening. Also, kind of an update on where everything was with the 2021 Bonds and specifically some of the work that was going to be coming up this summer. We also received a report from Mr. Mann on the Leadership Development Program. And lastly, Ms. Drawz gave a kind of an update on the ESTR3 survey that we get to do every six months or so. And so, it was a fairly short meeting, but lots of important information, and it went well.
Okay, I'll go next. I got two of them. Shaq met last week. That will be the last official meeting for Shaq for the year. They only meet four times a year, although they still have a committee going because kind of it's been a regrouping year, and they are...one of the main things they're trying to get done this year, or we're trying to get done, is rewrite the bylaws for Shaq. And so, they have a committee working on that specifically, a subcommittee, I guess they'd say. And they will bring those, or probably will bring those to the board sometime later in the year. But they will also bring their annual presentation to the board, I think in April, and so we discussed some interesting ideas for that, some just ideas they want to share with the board, so we'll look forward to hearing from them in April. And then, I'll move right into Education Foundation. They also met last week, but really, the news about Education Foundation is, what's 50 Men? And how fantastic it was, how record-breaking it was. There were record-breaking earnings, over $300,000 brought in for that one event, quite amazing. Also, record-breaking attendance, and so over 2,000 people were in that room. It was full for a little while, but it was wonderful. Lots of wonderful food. I mean, we just...I know Theresa wanted me really to pass on her thanks. First of all, to the Education Foundation Board for all the work they put into having the event, right, and raising the funds, but certainly to all the chefs and the volunteers that make it happen. I mean, for those of you who go, or those of you who have been a chef, there's obviously a lot of work that goes into it, so very much thank you to all those who made that happen, and many in this room too, so thank you. And then, the only other thing I'm supposed to add on Education Foundation is that if you have a senior, scholarships are open for a little while longer. March 1st is the deadline, and they don't...the Education Foundation doesn't manage all the scholarships for the district, but they manage a lot of them. It really is the place to funnel the scholarships, so get your applications in if you have a senior. I think that's it. Do you have anything else to add for...all right, thanks, sir.
Personnel Advisory Committee met. A couple of things were just kind of more informational, working through auxiliary pay, and secondary coaches, some information exchanging place there, and then, again, thanking the Addams Family for their safety and security million-dollar donation. And then, two things really, if you teach here for 25 years and beyond, the scale of a pay raise was not listed, but if you're here for 25 years or more, we'll keep paying you more, so stick around. And then, the other question was about can the auditorium be used by employees? So, Mr. Martindale, I believe my interpretation of that is the teachers would like some sort of swim team on their own, so. I'll say that back.
Your interpretation, huh? Okay.
That's what I heard, too.
Right. Oh, it hits. Okay. Go ahead, since I started, Mr. Horak. Superintendent's update. As Mr. Mann mentioned a little bit, workshop earlier today, we heard from Melissa Fleming from VOK Architects. They provided us their comprehensive facilities condition assessment. They've been doing that work since September, when the district engaged with them to start taking a look at all of our facilities throughout the district. They delivered that report in workshop, and these are these wonderful binders sitting on the tables. We will have those posted on our website for the community to be able to take a look at, probably before our meeting is over this evening. That information will be the foundation for the piece of which our long-range facilities and bond planning committee will have many conversations. We chartered that committee this evening. We'll come back to the board in March with names and membership for that committee that will meet throughout April and May and deliver some recommendations to the board in June to consider as far as facilities and possible bond projects. Reminder to our board that we do have, along these same lines, kind of a facilities visioning workshop with Dr. Lizzie Johnson. That's scheduled for March the 8th at 1:00 PM, so make sure you have that in your calendars. I'm not sure anyone needs to be reminded of this, but we do have spring break the week of March 13th. And also, a little look forward to the March meeting as well. We'll have three different items from our 21 Bond on with some values, some dollar amounts for the board to consider for approval. That would be Phase 2 of renovations to A&amp;M Consolidated High School, renovations to Pebble Creek Elementary School, and renovations to the auditorium for the faculty and staff swim team.
Yeah, admin versus teacher swim teams, I think.
So, that's the information. Student celebrations, a ton of these. Under the Career and Technology CTE umbrella, we have students progressing to state and all these different organizations from CTE. FCC LA, which is Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. BPA, Business Professionals of America. HOSA, which is Future Health Professionals, and Skills USA. So, all of those different organizations that fall under the umbrella of Mr. Ross's work have kiddos that have qualified and are progressing to state competition. That's incredible, and kudos to the sponsors, teachers, and the kids, of course. In Fine Arts, we have three visual arts students from Consolidated that are advancing to the state visual arts scholastic event. We have 26 students from Consolidated and CSHS Band Programs that receive first division ratings from UIL solos and advanced to UIL State Solo and Ensemble, and they will be competing in May. 39 students from Consolidated and CSHS Choir Programs that have received first division ratings and will be advancing to the state UIL competition as well. Wrestling, we had three wrestlers compete at state this past weekend. Tiger Swim was at state this past weekend as well. 17 swimmers competed at the swimming and diving meet, and the girls 200-meter relay team finished third in state, so congratulations to those ladies. And as we sit here this evening, we have the Lady Cougar Basketball Team competing in a playoff game, as well as Tiger Boys Basketball competing in the playoffs. So, spring is busy, and with that, we have a lot of kids and sponsors and coaches and teachers achieving a great amount of success.
All right, that'll bring us to item E, Hearing of Citizens. Anything? Nothing there? That'll bring us to item F, Consent Agenda. Those items are...item G, J3, J4, J5, and K1.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. McAdams, a second by Dr. Payne. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0. That will bring us to item H, H1, Receive a Report on Gifted and Talented Instruction and CSISD. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Horak and board members. Every month, we bring a program report for informational purposes to the board. This month, we have Gifted and Talented. Our Coordinator of GT and State Compensatory Ed, Ms. Vicki Murphy, will be sharing a program report with us this evening.
Good morning, Ms...good evening, Mr. Horak, Mr. Martindale, and members of the school board. Thank you so much for having me here this evening and allowing me the time to talk to you about, for a few minutes, for about our Gifted and Talented program. We're going to be looking a little bit at an overview of our GT program and CSISD. We're going to give you a program description, talk about some of our goals and activities that we've been working on so far this year, give you a little bit of data, and some of the opportunities for growth and for celebration that we have. So, this is the definition of a gifted child in CSISD. It's also the definition that the state plan gives us as well, and we're...our plan is aligned with the state plan, and so our definitions are the same. When you look at this, it talks about that they're performing at a remarkably high level of accomplishment when compared to others of the same age, experience, or environment, and that's very important to us in CSISD. We do work with test scores, but we look at the child as a whole. We have a committee that looks at the data, but we look at more than just the data and the scores of the child. Our staffing and services that we have, CSISD serves 1,634 students, and that's 11% of our population. We serve them through Kinder through 12th grades. We have trained classroom teachers that have their Level 1 30-hour training. We also have 13 full-time enrichment specialists, which act as resources and supports for classroom teachers. And then, we have me this year. We have GT and State Comp Ed Coordinator. Some of the services that we provide for our students are clustering. We provide pull-out services with our enrichment specialists and in-class differentiation So, our budget, the state does help us with a little bit of state funding, but it caps at 5% of our average daily attendance. And so, we have 1,634 students. Well, it funds 687 of those students. So, our state allocation is $296,000, but our total expenditures for our program is, as you can see, $1,054,000. And that's state and local contribution, so that's combined. So, we take the state allocation, and then, local money makes the difference. Payroll and benefits is a little over $1 million, and then, the non-payroll is $34,000, and that would be our TAGT On Demand. That's an online 30-hour training for those who miss it in the summer. It would also be our testing materials that we use each year for students, and then, each campus gets a small budget as well. Okay, so we're going to move to goals and activities, and this is broken up into three parts for you tonight. We have some activities that we're doing with our service design for our student assessment and our curriculum and instruction. So, we're going to start off with our service design. And our service design really is laid out by the Texas State Plan for the Education of Gifted and Talented Students, and it's linked there for you just in case you wanted to see that. It has six parts to it, but we're going to talk about these three tonight. Okay, so the service design, the state has a goal for us and what our services will be for our gifted students, and that will be there. Our students will demonstrate skills that are in self-directed learning, thinking, research, and communication, and all of these will be evidenced through innovative products and performances that are advanced beyond their grade level. And then, with those products and performances, it also has some goals, that those will reflect individuality and creativity. They'll be advanced in relation to students of similar age, so not just the top of their grade, but beyond. And those...once again, that phrase comes in, of similar age, experience, and environment. High schools graduates will have an opportunity at some point for their performances and their products to be of professional quality. Okay, so some of our student assessment goals that we have. Right now, we are in the middle of our assessment season. We are looking for students with a testable educational need for services. Our kindergartners just finished testing, and we've just gone through the committee to look at the data that we've collected, and identified students will be served March 1st. 1st through 11th grade, we're just accepting their referrals right now. That referral period has just ended, and so we will just be starting their assessment period. period. They will be finished by May 12th, and then they will be served the following year. In order for us to assess, we do have some guidelines from the state, and we have to post public notice of all the referrals that has to be sent out district-wide. We have to have parent permission. Although anyone can refer a child, we have to have parent permission in order to test. And then if their child qualifies for services, we have to have parent permission again. Their data is taken to the Admission Review and Exit Committee. That's our ARE committee that looks at the data, but it also looks at other aspects of that child, whether they're testing in their second or third language, those kind of things. And students may retest every year if they do not qualify for services. The instruments we use, we use an achievement test and a cognitive abilities test. And so K8, we use MAP, and that's our Measures of Academic Progress. And then in 9th through 11th, we use the ITBS test, and that's the Iowa Test of Basic Skills. Those are our achievement tests. An achievement test basically shows what the student, how the student performs in class, how they perform on, on learned material. A cognitive abilities test shows how they problem-solve their way out of unfamiliar material that they have not studied. And then we also have a parent survey and a teacher survey that goes out. The state requires that we use three instruments. We use four, and we think it's important to use a parent and a teacher survey because children perform differently at home than in school, and so different, multiple perspectives on that child. We are looking for children in the 96th percentile or higher in the nation, so that's our top 4% of that population. So 11% of our population is in that top 4%, so that's where those percentages get. And we are looking for a child that has a testable educational need for services. Okay, the next activities we'd like to talk about for just a second is curriculum and instruction. And the state plan states that we will need to modify the depth, complexity, and pacing of our curriculum beyond what is normally provided in the school. And so these are, this is verbiage from the state plan. It all has to be research-based, so everything we use with our kids has to be research-based. This is a frame, and it is a depth and complexity frame that, like a child might see in their classroom. So this is an example of that depth and complexity that the state plan says we need to use. So this would be a frame that is all about the topic of GT in CSISD. And so if we were studying this as a unit, just like we've been doing right now, we would look at the big ideas of GT and CSISD. We'd look at some of those details. We'd look at some of the rules that TEA has set aside for us to follow. We would venture into changes and how our program has changed over time, and maybe changes that it will take in the future. And then if we continued this as a unit, we would probably research some of the unanswered questions that we still have about, about our GT program. Now, this is what our elementary teachers and students have been working with for three years. Now COVID kind of threw us off a little bit, but for about three years, we've been working on this, trying to build this language in our students. Each one of these icons represents a different way to think about things, so that when the kids see that, it's not only verbal, but it's, it's a visual representation of, oh, they're asking me to see changes, or oh, they're asking me for the big idea here. So it's just a visual to help them focus their thinking. Secondary has been introduced to this, but not really trained in it just yet, but we're hoping that that comes, and then our students will have a continuous vocabulary through, through their journey through CSISD. Okay, TEA has asked us to code our, our programs, and that's one of the rules that TEA has set out for us. So K6, we are coded as a pull-out program, and that means that we have scheduled GT class time outside of the regular classroom, where we provide a variety of instructional groupings. The state plan says that we will, that students will have time together with their intellectual peers, with their age peers, and independently, and so that's where we provide those things. We have clustering to help with that, and then they are supposed to, once again, develop those advanced products and performances. In 7th through 12th, we're coded as full inclusion. That means that identified GT and non-identified students are in the same classroom. However, it's still differentiated instruction in the classroom for our gifted kiddos. Flexible grouping is once again happening within that classroom, where they can work with intellectual peers, age peers, and on their own. They will produce advanced products and performances, once again. And then it also talks about how we will accelerate students in different grade-level classes. So just like we place out a fifth grade and do that accelerated math and advanced ELA, you may not be in a class that normally is associated with your grade level. Okay, so gathering all of that information, wanted to talk to you about a little bit of data and share a little bit of data with you about identification of our students, about the participation in our program, and some of their achievements. This is the assessment data that we have for the past two years. Like I said, we're in the middle of this year, so we don't quite have all that data just yet, but we are the happy little gold color in all of these little slides. So you can see in 2020, 21 that we tested 883 students and 241 of them qualified. The next year, it's about the same, 896 and 213 qualified. So we are casting a wide net and trying to, to test as many as we can. Okay, so we wanted to look at, since we're advancing students beyond their grade level, we wanted to see how, how they're working, how they're doing that. And so at the intermediate level, we have 319 gifted students that are identified gifted, and 314 of those are taking some sort of advanced course. In middle school, so grade seven and eight, we have 292 students, and 289 of those, so three shy, are taking some sort of advanced course. And then high school, we have 658 total GT students, and 635 of those are taking either advanced or AP courses. 10 of those are actually at College View, and so they do not offer that option, and so those would not, those would not be in there. So we wanted to look at if there, if these are the courses they're taking, then how, how are we doing? And so we looked at some state assessments, and so we looked at the reading star, and once again, we are that gold color, and the state is purple. Now, these are GT students in the state compared to our GT students in CSISD. So you can see in every grade level, we are outperforming the state GT students, that And then in math as well, we are outperforming the state as well. In seventh grade, there were fewer than 10 students, the GT students, that actually took the seventh-grade STAR test, and so they were not a reporting category. But you can see in all of them, we were outperforming. So, so many of our GT students are taking those advanced courses that there weren't. Seventh grade kind of gets skipped. And the, in high school, the EOC, you can see that we are outperforming the GT students across the state as well in each one of those. And keep in mind, when you're looking at these, that these are not necessarily, Algebra I is not necessarily freshman taking this. It's eighth graders and seventh graders as well. But as you can see, our students are highly successful on our state tests and are being encouraged to take more of those rigorous AP and advanced courses. But, like everything in life, there are opportunities for growth and change, and, but we also need to take time to recognize and celebrate what we do well and to build upon those things also. So some of the challenges that we have in CSISD are that we might need a little bit of professional learning that's specific to our GT students, and differentiated support for them as well. Every year, our teachers get their six hours of update credit, of the GT update credit that is mandated by the state. However, there is room for us to make that a little more targeted and even more purposeful for them, but we have many reasons for celebration in CSISD as well. And so these are some of the, the big ones that have really hit me this year. Our secondary documentation of differentiation. Since we are being coded as full inclusion, 7th through 12th, we have to document what we're doing for our GT students. And so they have begun documenting how we serve them at the secondary level. They've taken this challenge to heart, and they are really turning in documentation that is meaningful and shows the educational opportunities that they are offering their GT students. We are building that cohesive language of depth and complexity that's going to allow our students to have that same verbiage and that depth of thinking across their CSISD journey. And then, as you can see from our data, our students are differentiating, are demonstrating achievement above and beyond their gifted peers across the state. So our teachers are doing a wonderful job with our GT students. Thank you so much for your time and your continued support of our GT program, and if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Vicki, the data was at the master's level, is that correct?
That's correct. That's mastering, so it's not just passing, but it's mastering.
I caught that.
On the, on the, the challenges slide?
Yes, sir.
The professional learning, could you give us some examples of what you mean there?
Yes. Professional training, every year, they're required to do six hours of GT training to update their, their main 30, and then their six is required every year. And so those could be in different, different types of things. It could be in creativity, it could be in social and emotional needs, but right now, I think we are, since we're asking people to document, we really need things that are a little more targeted to what would be usable, usable and user-friendly in the classroom. And so I think that's where we, where we need to head.
I have a number of thoughts and questions that stand out. One is this switch in high school now to this kind of full, that you are having to document and try to differentiate within a regular classroom as opposed to previously where it was really, we could just say our GT kids were in advanced courses, right? Which they are, your data shows, but.
Yes.
I mean, is that really working? I mean, I guess just the, the bluntest way to, to, to put it. I mean, you put it as a positive that you are starting to document that, but to, to really make that happen for those kids in high school, is it happening in every class? Is, are you targeting certain classes where you're, where we're doing these differentiation?
This year, we are asking across the board. So everyone, 7th through 12th, is being asked to document. Created a spreadsheet, and then got some more feedback and revamped that spreadsheet, and so we've kind of gotten a user-friendly instrument. This is the first year that we are being asked to do something like this, so the documentation is at different levels. It's meeting the expectation that I've set, but some have gone above and beyond that. I have heard from some of the GT students that things are coming up, that they're being asked to do, that they haven't been in the past, and so I do think that it is making an impact. Now, 100%, probably not, but all those little pockets spread, and I think any, any, any step forward is a step in the right direction.
Yep. Well, it does seem like a complicated thing to manage, so, and again, something additional to, for the teachers to manage as well.
Yes.
Thanks. The other thing that, one other thing that stood out, of course, is that we only get 5%, are paid on 5% of our ADA when obviously 11% of our kids are in the program, and it actually looks like, yes, our kid, we do have a higher percentage of kids that are truly gifted, at least, at least through all the excellent achievement data you showed along with that. So that's disappointing, right, that the state doesn't support that? Not the first time we've said that.
Right. We just have to be a little more creative with what we do and how we spend our money.
Can you describe what you mean when you say clustering at the elementary levels more specifically?
Mm-hmm.
Because I know that's been a debate back and forth. You cluster, you not cluster, I mean, not, not in college stations per se, but.
Clustering is where, so if I had eight students on the, in, on, in third grade at a campus, then they would be clustered together. So we might group four and four. The state plan says clustering, one of the interpretations from TEA says a group of four. So we, we usually held it to five or more. We tried to do five or more here, just so they do have a little bit of flexibility if they're doing partner work, group work, that they can work with those intellectual peers. So that, that's how, that's how clustering works.
So does that mean that they're clustered in the same class together?
Correct.
Is that what that means? Okay.
Correct.
My only other thought, and this is just a thought, is just linking this back to some of our strategic plan and how, you know, we're talking about some of the aspirational things we're having for our students to really own their own education more. I could really see this being a, that the GT students could be a place that could really start that immediately, right?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do for us.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Anything else? All right. That'll bring us to H2, Receive a Report on Progress Associated with HB3 Board Goals. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Ms. Horak. Here to provide us mid-year update on our House Bill 3 Board Goals is our Executive Director of Elementary Ed, Dr. Stormy Heckman.
Good evening, Ms. Horak, Mr. Martindale, members of the board. As Mr. Martindale stated, I'm here to provide you with a mid-year MAP growth report. And as a reminder, this is regarding our House Bill 3 goals and progress measures that the board adopted back in December. So this is our first formal report after we adopted those goals just earlier this year. As a reminder, House Bill 3 is something that the legislature requires us to do. However, it does align with Goal 2 of our strategic plan, which states that we will do things that elevate the outcomes for our historically underperforming student groups. And so evaluating our data is one way that we can identify what student groups may need some extra support and where, how we can allocate our resources in order to make sure that all of our students are getting what they need in order to grow. So just a quick refresher on NWEA MAP reporting. So remember that MAP is a nationally-normed achievement scores, and they, those nationally-normed scores are provided with each administration for students. Then after the achievement scores are assigned, MAP establishes an expectation for students to grow. So there is a met, a meets-growth expectation established. So at the beginning of the year, here is your achievement level, and then MAP tells us, at the middle of the year, this is where we expect your students to be, how much we expect them to have grown, and at the end of the year, this is how much we expect that they would have grown. Keeping that in mind, whenever we're looking at nationally-normed, anything at 50% or above is well within where we want to be whenever it comes to MAP growth, because it is normed across the nation. So at the beginning of the year, only achievement scores are reported, and then at the middle and end of the year, we have both achievement scores and that MET growth indicator. So where I have the little blue arrow here is what we're going to, what I'm going to show you tonight, which is the percentage of students who MET growth middle of the year last year versus middle of the year this year. That's going to be the focus of, of our House Bill 3 performance data, MOY year-over-year. Also, student group data and campus data is reported to the board separately. That more detailed information isn't covered here in the presentation regarding particular student groups and particular campuses. However, we have included some summary information for you so that you can see what our next steps are with looking at both the overall data and that more specific data. So we'll start with mid-year growth for kindergarten through fourth-grade reading. You can see here in blue, we have the all-students percent who met the growth measure for 21, 22, and then in green, you see our percent who met growth measure for 22, 23. So what's the story here? Our story is that we're pretty consistent. So we don't see any huge variances of percentages one way or the other. We do see here, third grade had, you know, a bit higher growth from last year to this year than some of the other grades, but to me, the, the big picture is that we have some consistency. Of course, we want those growth numbers to increase, but at this time, we are at least seeing that we're largely maintaining and seeing some, some peaks of growth. As a reminder, our House Bill 3 progress measure is that the percent of students who meet their growth measure in reading from the beginning of year to the end of the year will increase from 53% to 60% over five years. So in five years, we want our EOI growth to be at 60%. Okay? So just for context, third grade is what we're reporting as part of House Bill 3, but it is important that we look across multiple grade levels at this data. Similar story with fifth through eighth-grade reading. Again, last year is in blue and this year is in green. We are seeing that we are largely maintaining. There's a little bit of a dip there at sixth grade, but again, it's, it's about four percentage points, and it's just slightly outside of the margin of error, so really, we are maintaining as far as that growth measure from mid-year to mid-year. So what does this mean for us? We sat down with the curriculum coordinators, and Ms. Parkinson and I, and really talked through, let's look at the data and see what we're going to do with it. That's how it becomes valuable to us. And so just some key points that we noticed. Big successes are that six of the nine grade levels have the same or higher growth than last year. So that's good, that six of the nine grade levels have, are moving in, in the direction of more students meeting their growth measure. We also noted that third grade showed more growth in all of the student groups, except for special education, which was only a 2% decline, so that's still really close, but we're seeing all of our. decline. So that's still really close. But we're seeing all of our student population, all of our student groups, excuse me, in third grade growing, which is really encouraging. Growth opportunities that we identified in kindergarten, we did have two student groups. It's actually the African-American and special education student groups, where the growth was a lot lower than it was last year at this time. And so that, you know, creates cause for, like, what do we, we need to look more carefully into that data and determine what we can do to ensure that those students are providing, being provided opportunity for growth. And then our fourth, sixth, and seventh grade MET growth rate is a little less in most of the student groups. So while overall, the data looks pretty consistent, some of our student groups are popping up as perhaps not growing quite as much as we would like for them to. So for our next steps in reading, we need to ensure that those individualized interventions are provided where needed. So we need to look at data carefully and see which students maybe have not reached their growth goal up to this point and what we're going to do to support them individually. And then, again, a targeted review of additional benchmark data. We know that MAP is one piece of data. And so we need to look at that in a way that tells us what our next step should be as far as where else do we look? What other data do we look at that helps inform our practice so that we can make sure across tier-one instruction in the classroom, and then individually, we are making sure our students are getting what they need. We'll move on to math. Again, you see some similar data. This year, in green, is pretty consistent with last year. There are a couple of grade levels, we're at about that four percentage point difference, but for the most part, we're maintaining some consistency mid-year last year to mid-year this year in math. And then just as a reminder, our progress measure is regarding third grade BOI to EOI. So our goal in math is to get that percentage to 70% in five years. So that's the number that we're watching most carefully whenever it comes to our House Bill III goals. Five through eight math, again, a similar picture. We're seeing this year in each of these grade levels, we have a bit more growth than we did at this time last year, which is quite encouraging. But again, we're maintaining some consistency and seeing those sort of small wins. Summary from our math data, great successes, four of the nine grades maintained or increased growth in all but two student groups. So again, that more detailed data will be provided to you later. It's a lot of charts to put up on the screen. But know that in looking at those student groups, we have a lot of student groups who are increasing in math, and that's really encouraging. And fifth grade specifically showed more growth in every single student group of year-over-year, which is really great. For growth opportunities, we've identified that first and fourth grade were lower by about 4%. Again, that is not cause for concern at this point, but it is of note that we need to make sure we're keeping an eye on those two particular grade levels. And then particularly in math, we do have new math curriculum. And so that has changed the sequencing of our instruction. So for example, in first and second grade, in previous years, they learned geometrical concepts in the fall. And so in their mid-year map, it would be more reflective of a higher skill level in geometrical concepts, but they haven't learned that yet this year. And so they haven't yet had that opportunity to spiral through that skill. So the great thing about when a skill is introduced early is that it can be practiced more often. And my understanding is that our computational skills were introduced earlier, and therefore, our students are having more practice at those computational skills in those grade levels this year. So all that is to say, we just need to continue to monitor our new curriculum and that sequencing to make sure that our students are able to get all the instruction that they need. And then next steps with that, continue that curricular implementation. And then the same two bullet points that we saw in reading, making sure we're providing individualized instructions and that we are conducting targeted review of additional data where it's appropriate and not just spacing all of our educational decisions on one data point, but that we're looking at lots of information. Finally, we'll talk about science. There is no House Bill III goal for science, but we do provide this assessment to our students in third through eighth grade. And so we wanted to provide that data to you as well. This is really exciting chart because all of the grade levels have a little bit higher growth than they did in the previous year. So all grade levels in science are looking really encouraging so far in our mid-year report. Summary for science, we did see increased growth in third grade in all student groups. Once again, our third graders this year are showing a lot of growth. Fourth and seventh grade had growth in all but one student group. So we're seeing student groups growing, which goes back to that strategic design goal, too, of making sure that all of our student groups are getting what they need to grow. We did see two student groups emerge in bilingual and African-American that increased in all MAP-tested grade levels. So those two particular student groups showed an increase in every grade level. And that's pretty exciting there. And then three out of five cohort groups increased in overall growth. One of the things Ms. Gibson did is look year-over-year. So how much did these students grow in fourth grade compared to fifth grade? And we saw them growing more in three of five of those cohort groups, which was encouraging. Opportunities for growth that we need to take a closer look at, we did have two student groups that showed less growth by more than 10%. Those student groups were the seventh grade Asian student group and eighth grade two or more races. It's a bit of an anomaly. And so we need to get more information and find out perhaps why, what our theory is on why that happened and make sure that we're not, there's not a gap that's increasing there. We want to get on that early if there is some sort of issue with the way that we're instructing students. And then our eighth grade cohort declined in overall growth. They were 59% growth in seventh grade and 53% as eighth graders. And so really taking a close look at those students who are currently in eighth grade to ensure that they meet that growth goal by the end of the year. So our next steps will be to attempt to establish a cause for the significant decreases in growth. And then also, just of note, Ms. Gibson is working with the Texas Collaborative for Science Instruction. It is a huge undertaking. She's spent a great deal of time with them. And it is about what can we do to improve our tier-one science instruction for all students. And she has conducted focus groups and observations and all sorts of things. And so we're looking forward to that work helping to continue to grow our students in science.
Stormy, when you say tier-one instruction?
Oh, thank you. Tier-one instruction is the regular classroom instruction every kid should get. That is the teaching in the classroom. Just a couple more slides here for you. I think it's important that we also look at our district next steps. So in our district improvement plan this year, one of our goals is regarding professional learning communities. This is just a snip from our mid-year review of the dip, a snip of the dip for our district improvement plan. This is about professional learning communities. So PLCs, our professional learning communities, are times whenever teachers can come together and review data and look at practices and really make informed instructional choices. And that's been one of our goals this year, is that we really work toward a district-aligned expectation for those groups. And that really is something that's going to improve tier-one instruction and even intervention or instruction for all students. So that's something that we're doing at a district level that we're really excited about. It's been great work this year. The principals have just really been very excited about participating in that work as well. And then additionally, from the district improvement plan, we are working through really shoring up our multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS services, that basically show us whenever a student is struggling or falling behind, that we recognize that and we know how we can step in and intervene early so that we don't have students who end up with gaps in their learning. So that's a process we've had in place for a while, but we're really taking a close look at that this year to see what works really well about that process and what we might need to shore up a bit. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I have two questions.
Okay.
One may not be germane to this topic, but on the PLCs.
Yes.
Do the teachers have time in general?
It's a great question. So yes, we, so we are in the middle of this work right now. So like, this is a question that we've asked ourselves already a lot. Our campuses who are a little bit ahead of the curve on PLCs, who've made some choices to do some implementation early, early adopters, have found ways to create time within the teacher's schedule so that it is not an additional after-school assignment of time. What we found anecdotally up to this point is that if we can carve out the time, the teachers find it to be exceptionally valuable. It's just a matter of finding a way for that to happen during the course of the workday as opposed to one more day. You have to stay really late after school.
And I think that's the bigger thing, is if we give them time for professional development and also their classroom development during the workday, we're paying them for the workday.
Yes.
I just know in other organizations I've been in, if you add up the actual professional development requirements, they sometimes exceed
Right.
a six-hour work week.
So I will say, we haven't quite answered that total question yet, but we are very conscious of it and working on it.
Okay, good. Yeah, that's all we can ask for. Looking at the graphs, when we look at the development, academically, is there, is it a linear growth year to year to year? Or are there jumps? Because I notice like, third grade seems to be a lot bigger jump than first.
So one of the ways that we looked at the data whenever we were sort of slicing and dicing it to come in and prepare for you today is to look at that cohort growth and to see, is it our students growing more in certain grade levels? Or are they, we talked about it specifically in science, like, is there a time where, gosh, they grew a whole lot last year and then they didn't grow much this year? Like, what's happening there? Whenever we looked at that data, it was consistent with the graphs, the charts that I showed you, in that it's pretty consistent. There's not a whole lot of big variance. Where we have identified that variance in the couple of places, we have started to ask ourselves those questions of like, why might that be? What comes to mind specifically is like fourth grade math. So last year in third grade, those students grew a great deal. This year in fourth grade, their growth is less. But we have changed our curriculum. And so that's one of those things where we're staying the course and making sure that that sequencing and curricular implementation, that it's being monitored to a point so that we don't have, we don't create a gap. So it wasn't significantly different than the data that you saw.
I have one question, and again, on the graphs as well. Thinking about similarly, could, does COVID play a factor in this as well, right? Especially in the year-to-year? I mean, the kids who started last year were starting at a different place than the kids who started this year.
That's a good question. And I don't know that, it's funny, like, two years ago, every conversation we had was like, okay, where, how does COVID impact this? And then it sort of gradually becomes less of the conversation because we've got to catch up whatever we were behind. So I don't know that I have, like, specific data to point to. I can say anecdotally that our kindergartners this year, we have some other data that says they may have come in with a bit fewer skills than kindergartners in the past, academic skills. And so we're really keeping a close eye on that group. And some of our conversation has been associated with like COVID and post-COVID and just exposure to things in the world. For that particular group of students, maybe different than kindergartners that we've seen before. So I don't know that I have an exact, like, what I can say is COVID and not COVID, but it is something that continues to kind of be at the back of our minds as we look at the data.
So I know they're both important, but when you're looking at this data, does the district put more weight or concern on following a particular cohort, like, kind of follow Mr. Heckers' question?
Right.
Or third graders this year, third graders next year?
I don't know that I would say one has more weight or concern, because I think they're both really valuable pieces of data, and we look at them a little bit differently. So in the example that I gave about fourth graders, for example, that cohort of fourth graders, we can look at that group of students and know the curricular changes that we've made and really drill down into that information to say, well, you know, the growth is, because they're doing things in a different, they're having a completely different math experience perhaps than they'd had in the past. I think both are relevant. So I don't know that either is more important. We have looked and will continue to look at both.
Does the state require you to look at both? Or do they just require you to look at year-over-year?
They, because of the House Bill III goal, we're required to look at third grade year-over-year. So that's why we defaulted really to this view rather than the other for this presentation, because that's what the state requires us to look at for House Bill III.
I appreciate that you guys look at the cohorts as well. And I may be a bit of a broken record here tonight, but do private schools, are they held to the same, are they subjected to House Bill III?
I'm afraid I do not know the answer to that.
Okay, just questioning.
I will find out and let you know.
Thank you.
I will.
I think it's a no.
Anything else? We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. That'll bring us to I1, consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding an amendment to the 2022-23 Employee Compensation Plan, which adds an early resignation incentive for eligible professional staff using ESER funds. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Ms. Horak and board members. Dr. Perry and I believe Ms. Traw has both shared this idea and some information and details with the group. We had some conversation around this in workshop in January. So here with a refresher and seeking action is our Chief Administrative Officer, Dr. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale. Good evening, Mr. Horak, members of the board. As mentioned, we did begin this discussion as an extension of our conversation around the importance of recruitment and retention of high-quality staff here in College Station ISD. As we brainstormed ideas of ways to not only recruit and retain, we really found that there were a number of districts around the state that had been engaging in early resignation incentives to better plan for those vacancies and to be able to start that recruiting process earlier so that not only can we fill our positions, but hopefully we can fill our instructional vacancies with the very best. And so I'm going to spend just a couple of minutes refreshing you all on some of the most critical components of this particular recommendation. And if you have any additional questions, we will certainly have time for that as well. So this particular incentive would apply to professional or exempt staff who are currently under contract and in good standing with the district. This would specifically, within that professional staff category, apply to those whose primary responsibility is to provide and/or directly support students' instructional needs. So of course, that would include teachers, also counselors, nurses, librarians, instructional coaches, administrators, any position that may result in ultimately a teacher vacancy, because that is the focus of our particular concern with needing to ensure high-quality teachers in the classroom. These would be full-time staff, and they would, as I mentioned, be in good standing. They would need to work for the remainder of their 22-23 contract, as well as provide that early notification to us in writing with both a letter of resignation, as well as a written agreement outlining their understanding of these requirements, no later than Monday, March 20th, by the end of the day, to the Human Resources Office. That would be the Monday after spring break. And so if approved by the board this evening, we would notify our employees of this opportunity. Should they be contemplating a resignation or retirement, they would have several weeks to make that consideration and submit the appropriate documentation to be eligible. This would be $4,500 to be paid at the end of their contract on their final check. And we would be funding this with ESER dollars, as it does tie to that critical importance of recruiting high-quality staff. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
So this does not apply to Board of Trustees, correct?
Sorry.
Just making sure we got that on record.
So sorry, Mr. Horak.
I wanted to make a motion. I was going to help you out, right?
I just wanted to double-check. So we're looking for a motion.
I move to approve as presented.
I'll second.
A motion by Ms. Nolan, a second by Mr. Ben. Any further discussion?
I just have a request. I know we're using ESER funds for this. Can I report back as we start to get into future budgets, kind of how popular this option is so we can take that into account?
Absolutely. Obviously, ESER funds are not unlimited, nor will they continue for a lot longer. We felt like this was a good opportunity to see what kind of response we might have. And of course, we'll follow that up with a report on the number and the overall cost of the program to evaluate whether it's something we wanted to consider in a compensation plan in the future. Because again, this is just for the current 22-23 year.
All right. We have a motion by Ms. Nolan, a second by Mr. Ben. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And it carries 6-0. Thank you very much. That'll bring us to I2, consideration and discussion regarding capacity of the Kids Club after-school program. That'll bring us to I two, consideration and discussion regarding capacity of the Kids Club After School Program. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Ms. Horak and board members. We have Mr. Chad Gardner, our Director of Community Ed here with us this evening. Chad is going to give us a little data regarding number of kids currently served in Kids Club, capacity of facility, challenges with that, because demand is greater than than we have staffing for currently. So he's just going to talk to a little data with us and their efforts regarding managing staffing and hopefully recruiting folks as we even think about next year. So Chad.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale, Mr. Horak, members of the board. Yes, talking about Kids Club tonight. And so our goal and the passion is to provide a safe, fun, enriching and recreational program for as many families and children of College Station ISD as possible. So looking at numbers, I know you guys like numbers. You've guys seen a lot of numbers tonight. 758, that's our current capacity. That's how many kids we have after school right now. Way different than pre-COVID. So if you talk about pre-COVID, pre-COVID, we are approaching 1,400. So pre-COVID, we were roughly 10% of the total population of College Station ISD. So whatever that number is, we were about 10%. So that number has changed significantly. Current waitlist is 484. This number includes people who are just currently on the waitlist. This does not include parents who have or students who have been let into the program since the beginning of the school year. This does not include families or children who have declined being, joining the program since being offered position or have removed themselves from the waitlist. Current capacity plus our waitlist would give us a number of 1,242 kids. So if we could let all our waitlist kids in right now, that's where our number would be. If you look at total capacity, what we kind of gauged as far as how many kids can we adequately and safely have after school at all of our campuses, it'd be around 1,820. You know, that's on on a best day, on a given day where we have everything that we need, all the spaces, weather is perfect, all of that fun stuff. Okay. So if you want to look at numbers specifically across the across the campus, it gives you kind of the max capacity of of kids that we have there and current capacity plus our waitlist kids on every campus. Of course, the number plus of current capacity plus waitlist. So we could adequately, if we if we had enough, as I'll get into it, staff, current capacity for us plus our waitlist, we'd have basically everybody on campus safely except for one campus. And that's why, you know, if you look, it says mainly waitlisted students. Currently Greensboro would be our only school that kind of is our outlier on that. Have we had more kids than that at Greensboro before? Yes, we have, and it was nuts, honestly. It was, I think it was our second year of Greensboro and we had close to 240 kids. So, you know, on some of our elementary campuses, almost close to half the population of the campus after school. And it was, it was crazy. We had about 24 staff specifically on that campus that year. So is it capacity? Is it the amount of space that we have? It is not. It is staffing. And so I mean, I don't, I don't know if you know, but kind of across the board, staffing is an issue everywhere. And so if you look at districts like us, if you look at bigger districts, so specifically some other districts, even something like Plano, Plano specifically, their after school program has it posted on their website. We cannot have as many kids as we want basically because of staffing. And so it is, it's staffing for us. And so to meet the needs of currently enrolled plus our waitlisted kids, I would need 23 additional staff without conflicts. So without conflicts for us would be 245 to 615. That's just the normal day. That doesn't include like extra stuff that we do. It doesn't include meetings after work. It doesn't mean other things that we have to create and do to be able to run our program. So this is just showing up after school for our for our staff, Monday through Friday. So if you look at currently, we have 80 staff direct direct here with kids. Out of that 80, I have 47 that have conflicts. So that means that they are gone one or more or three days out of the week. They could be coming late, they could be leaving early, they could be doing both. So total staff without conflicts currently is a very small number. You know, and so and we get a lot of, we get a lot of questions. We've been doing this for a really long time. We have parents in our program who used to work with me as a staff and supervisor in Kids Club a long, long time ago that have asked the question, like, we never had this issue. Then we used to not, back in the day, a long time ago. You know, it was kind of a rule, like you, if you couldn't work all five days, you couldn't work Kids Club. You know, that was also in the day where we also had seven campuses that we're in charge of versus the 13 we have now. And so could I, could I staff those seven campuses adequately now? Definitely. But as you guys know, we've grown over the years here in College Station ISD. So are we hiring? Yes, we are. That's a lot of weird colors. I tried to figure out what was the best color. It's didn't work for me. So total hire, so we we hire, we've, over the past four semesters, we hire 73% of our applicants. That number would be at 78%, which I feel like is a pretty good number if we had that 5% that didn't refuse our offer. So we have 5%, we said, hey, we want to give you a job. And they said, no, thanks. So out of applicants too, 11%, we just get no response. So they apply and we contact them and we contact them. In this day and age, we text them because our population typically does well with texting versus emails. To say, hey, we got your application. We sent you some stuff. We want you to fill it out, give some information, all that kind of stuff. We get no response. We do have some that have just their availability just does not meet what we need. So they're not available even two, two to three days a week, you know, for us. We have a few that, hey, I want a job, and we give them a chance to sign up for an interview. Do not sign up for an interview. So 73% is, I think, a fairly good number as far as the applicants that we hire. And so we talk to a lot of people and so it's it's kind of a good deal. So what what has happened? What's happened? So going back to the fall of 18, there's a lot of like, that's weird numbers and lines and all kinds. Basically, all you need to know on this is that we have fewer applicants now than what we have had in the past. So left during the semester or hired during the semester? We hire throughout the entire semester. So I don't know if you know, we also run summer camp. So we hire and train year round. Like we have, we we do a training cycle every two weeks if we can. We, if we can get one person in to do training, awesome. We can get a group of people into training, great. But it also means too that they're constantly leaving and they're constantly coming. And so we were supposed to meet, or I was supposed to give you a presentation this last board meeting in January. Since that time, we hired seven. We've also lost five. So it's a, it's a really ebb and flow. We really have to look at semesters. School district considers jobs as school year positions. We look at it as semester. Everything changes for majority of our our population that we hire every semester. And that's because of graduation. That's because of, you know, moving on. For some of our, for some of our staff, it's because of they want to teach. And so they need a student to teach or they have methods or they have something else that goes on. So it just changes for us kind of all the time. And so also too, just starting with staff per semester, that number has changed. So I mentioned earlier, pre-COVID, we were getting close to 1,400 kids after school. We had a large number of staff. We we actually were staffing, the only people that were staffing more than us collectively were the high schools. So if you look at it, we had more staff that we were in charge of running out of our office than than most everybody else in the school district. If you look at like a campus, that's not the case anymore. We started this semester with 66, so that's half of what it was pre-COVID. And obviously too, if you look at the graph, you can tell where does our steep decline start? COVID. And so the spring semester of 20, everyone's familiar with that. You don't see a huge decline in that, but that's also because we were still paying our staff even though we didn't have kids here. But after that, you see a large decline in the amount of applications that we receive and the amount of the staff that we start our semesters off with. So it's been a big change for us over the last, you know, four or six years, you know, as far as what we're doing. Recruitment efforts, what do we do? So we we've done all kinds of stuff over the years. So advertisement, local publications. We've also had stories on local networks. If you know our staff, they're not, they're they're not watching local television. So we had great stories and they were awesome. We had a lot of people that said, yes, for that demographic, they said, hey, we saw your story. Just was an older population. And so, you know, recruiting people, those, I mean, our staff, our staff stream stuff. You know, their hobbies are Netflix and Hulu, most of them. You know, what's your hobby? I like watching Netflix. All right, cool. What are you watching right now? Yeah. So we we have increased our social media presence. And so if we want to contact our population, it's mostly mostly through social media. We were asked earlier, even earlier this evening, are we on TikTok? No, I got a TikTok account to check up on some of my staff, honestly. But but other than that, we don't use TikTok, but we are on Instagram, we're on Facebook, which meets our parents, not our, not our kids, our staff. You know, our staff aren't on Facebook unless it's what they want to post for their grandparents and their parents. So we go to any job fair that we can. We have been at the Aggie Job Fair, Part Time Job Fair for the last four years. We had a greater number of turnout as far as responses this year. So if you if you know, if you talk to 100 people, you get 10% return rate on that. So that's like 10 people, right? So we we got 40, we got 40, we talked to 40 people that we got them to fill out the thing and said, hey, we're interested. So in turn, you think, okay, that's four people. We actually got like 10 responding and say, hey, we want you to apply, but we didn't hire all of them because they didn't show up to interviews or return our stuff or whatever, but we got a lot. So that's a big number for us. And you think 40, that's not very many, and it's not, but it's huge for what we've what we've been able to have. Job fears coming up, RPTS, we hit one already this semester, we have one coming up March 1st, I believe is the day on that. So TAMU and Blend Table campuses, we we hit up those. And like again, we can talk to a lot of people. So to get 20 applicants, I need to talk to 200 people. So a table a day is going to cost me 50 bucks A&amp;M. And so it's the return rate on that as far as price is is not great. You know, so we have handed out flyers and stuff on campuses. We've done that personally. We've we've yelled at people in a nice way, like come work for us. Posting position on jobs for Aggies, I refresh that thing like every two weeks because that makes it pop to the top, you know? So we've learned different stuff. We've pressed advisors to send out job opportunities, which some do, they they respond better to our staff than they do to us typically. There's like 150 plus organizations to do that. You have to go through the list and click on every single organization's website to collect their information to then be able to put it in an email and and contact them. Same thing with Aggie Moms. There's a bunch of Aggie Moms groups throughout this, throughout the world, not just the state of Texas. We did contact the ones in California and Arizona, if you're wondering about that too, because their kids come to school here. So we've contacted all of them. One cool thing for us is we did increase pay rate. And if you look at that pay rate is for us, 925 was our starting rate. We increased it to 1065, which is a huge jump for us. So branding and logo gear, we have this nice cool logo that we have now. And if you want a sticker, I can get you one. Recruitment incentives, we've done that with our staff as well. So there's lots of things that we've done. We've been in all kinds of places. We've been in the movie theaters before. We've done all kinds of things over the years for recruitment pieces and retention of staff. So staffing is our huge issue. So in the future, people always say pay rates, we'll say pay rates. You guys have heard pay rates before. So really, what does it come down to? Money. You know, what is the magical number on pay rate? We don't know. But we do know, we do know that whenever I started working for the district with Kids Club in 1998, I could work at Kids Club or I could work anywhere in the city that would hire a college kid and make the same amount of money. That's different. You know, our staff now, me and 1065, which is a huge jump for us, is awesome. But they can go across the street over here to Chick-fil-A, to HEB, Costco, you know, start at 12, 15, 18 dollars an hour. So now, when you look at comparison to the rest of the district, I mean, right now, our our instructional aids are shooting at $12.10. You know, our staff are also considered pairs in the district, which is a huge deal for us because if that would have been the case, I'd have like five more years towards retirement because we weren't considered that back in the day. Could we have a full time recruiter? Yes, that would be cool. What does that mean? Money. So if we talk about money with our program, that means raising rates on parents. So do we jump rates this last year? Yes. Have we had people that contacted us that are on the waitlist and say, I would love to pay more money? Yes. Is that everybody that's on the waitlist? Probably not. I do know that we are probably the cheapest around town. Our closest competitor is $15 more a month. Our furthest away competitor here in town, we're, so currently we're at 165, 10 payments of 165. Our furthest away competitor is at 300 per month, which will offer less programming than what we offer. Is that normal statewide? Most districts across the board are are starting somewhere around 225 to $300 per month for after school care. Now, that's just districts that we know that we've contacted, that's districts that, you know, we're familiar with that run an after school program. So we we've delayed for a really long time on increasing rates for parents. And so, you know, it's kind of caught up to us now a little bit. So with that, I would love to answer any questions that you have about Kids Club.
I know y'all racked your brains about this constantly, so I'm probably not throwing anything out there you haven't already considered. But has there been any thought about kind of expanding the potential applicant pool beyond college students to maybe retired folks? Or, you know, something like that?
So especially since it's being recorded and it's live right now. If you can run and play, you want to get onto playground equipment, you can get down on the floor, you can throw a dodgeball, you can run around with kids. Apply. You know, what what we find is, yeah, I mean, the sad thing is this, like, we, it's funny, this, you bring this question up. We just hired a guy that was like 35, which isn't retired, I know, but he's 35, like way different than our normal population. And then like two days later, he like called us and said, hey, I got a different offer. You know, so, yeah, like if you, if you want, but I mean, but you, but like you have to want to run and play. So that's one thing that's driven from our, for our program that we expect from our staff that's different than others across the state. Like, you're going to run and play with kids, you're not going to watch your kids run and play. Just kind of the the deal for us, you know? If you want to sit and and if you want not in this, in, I'd say this, it, our SAA is actually staying too. If you want something that's a little less low key as far as running around playing with kids, yes, come and work up front. But you got to want to smile and talk to parents, you know? And make sure that we have our kids accounted for, you know, upfront. So if you want to come and work for us, come and work for us. You know, if you haven't worked with kids before, that's the majority of our of our population that comes and work for us. I mean, they babysit, but that's like one or two kids. You know, we're wanting you to work with 15 to 20 at a time, you know, in a group. So we just, we just don't have a lot of people who apply. And so some of that too, probably is the turn of the time. You know, when you're talking about us after school, even 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 moms who have kids that are in school. Well, then they get their kids after school, pick up their kids. And so, you know, they're not going to come work for us, you know, typically. But I think the timeframe is one that may be a little different, you know, for people, but yeah.
I attended the Chamber of Commerce Economic Outlook Conference and this was a huge issue and they they referred to it as the gig economy that this generation that you're primarily higher, they don't commit to a full semester or whatever else. It's a constant rotation of jobs and so it's it's tough.
It is, it is, yeah. I mean, and it's it's changed over the years, you know? I mean, even 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 You know, I mean, even, even, even within programs at A&amp;M, you'd think some of the programs like education or RPTS, youth development, it's just that when you tell youth development and RPTS, it's like they're higher level classes or in the afternoon.
So thanks for coming and sharing all, all the data. It's actually even worse than I thought it would be. I mean, it really is, it's unfortunate. And I mean, obviously, we're at this place, first of all, because it's a great program, right? We've said it over the years that you're here, that people want and need this program for, for their children. And that really is the reality. They, they depend on, have depended on this program. And I know it was, it's been really tough for some of these parents, especially this year when at the very, sometimes at the last minute to find out that what they thought they were going to be able, you know, to be in Kids Club, it was not, not available for them. And, and, and the reality is they are having to go somewhere else. They are, somebody is hiring these people. And as you said, somebody is paying, and these parents are paying more money to go somewhere else, usually for an inferior program, right? And their kids are having to spend, you know, time going and bus that are moving to somewhere else instead of staying on their campus with their friends. I think we have to fix it. I think it is an integral part of our, you know, our, our school community and what we offer to our, our parents and, and our families. It's just too important. You know, there's all, tons of data shows that what our kids are doing after-school really does matter. So I know we need, I mean, I can hear you saying we have to be careful about raising the rates, but I think that seems to be the only obvious answer to some, to make, to help this situation. What that number is exactly and all, I mean, I don't, I don't know that. But again, these people are going somewhere else where it's more expensive and they want to be here at, and they need to be here at our school. So it seems like a pretty, I mean, the, the rates being raised for both the program and then of course consequently for the, your employees, I think you said it has to happen because they can go somewhere else to, to make, make more money.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it's, it's begun, we talk about this daily.
What, what happened? Who makes the decision to, for this to happen? You know, is this, you're, you're completely self-funded still or is there 100%?
Yes, ma'am. We don't receive any tax dollars or, or any, any, from anyone. It's, it's all based off child tuition.
But you're still under our official purview, still report to Mr. Martindale, right? Just clarifying all that.
I do.
That's why we're here.
Yeah, he's, yeah, he's, he's still the boss, yeah.
Making sure.
Yeah. No, I mean, and that's, I mean, it's, we're, we're a school, we're a school district program. And so there's, there's a lot of pros to being a part of the school district. I mean, it's, we have a great school district. It's great to be a part of the school district. I would, and honestly, I would much rather be a part of the school district than not.
We like you there too. I just make sure I'm allowed to ask for this. I am.
And we, and honestly, we appreciate the school district keeping our program because, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of districts that don't have an actual program that's run by a department in their, in their school district.
When the numbers say we used to serve 1,400 students, you said, and now we're 700s?
We got pretty close.
Yeah, that's, there are a lot of families out there who aren't happy. I can tell you, I mean, I, I would have been really pissed if I would have showed, found out in early August that my kid couldn't have been in Kids Club after being in it in multiple years. That would have been really, really hard, so.
And I think a lot of that has to do with the great programming that you have. That's why people want to be in it so very badly is because it's so beneficial to their kiddos. And I understand that you want to keep it affordable as well. You want a safe place for kiddos to go that's still affordable. And I do respect that as well. Is there, and I don't, I'm just, I don't know if you, you don't necessarily need to answer this, but you know, in our district, we have different tiered cost for things, like even the AP tests, you know, there's a tiered cost or there's, you know, a free and reduced lunch costs, and then there's the non-free and reduced lunch costs. Is that something that could be, or that is incorporated into Kids Club or could be? I'm just throwing out.
Yes, ma'am, it is. So we, we operate with a free and reduced lunch price. We, we actually operate with a, with a free, a free price. So if you're on free lunch, you have a price. If you're on a reduced lunch, you have a price, which is different than a lot of other places too. A lot of the districts, even districts will only operate off of one price for free and reduced lunch. And our percentage of, of that discount is, is really great for those families.
Yeah, yeah. Safe place for these kiddos to be after-school.
Yeah, so.
You've got, it's, it's tough, the gig economy. I'd never heard that before. And I was thinking that too, just whenever he was talking. It's right.
Moving from one gig to another is how they refer to it.
Right. I mean, I've, since then, since I've heard the term, I've, you know, there's a lot of people that are doing it. It's tough to compete with.
Yeah. And I was following up on that. Obviously, very happy also that we do, we offer the reduced prices for, to get as many folks into the, into the program as can. Also, man, really promoting the, the benefits, the, you said they could be on, they can get TRS credit? Yeah, that's amazing.
It's, it's really, I mean.
They actually understood what that meant and could see that they would retire it someday.
Yeah, our, I think our staff that we hire that are looking to go into education, they understand what that is. But as far as, you know, I mean, that's, we get in TRS, it's any, any entity that, you know, that is with TRS. So if you work for A&amp;M, you already got it.
What's your age limit for hiring? Do you hire high school kids?
They do have to have graduated high school. And so we do ask for that. So they have graduated high school. Anything else? I mean, I can sit here and talk all day if you want.
I just want to say, I, I mean, I, I know I came down hard, but I, it is a wonderful program, but I do think we need to make some changes to be able to have more kids in the program in, in next fall. So thank you for all you do and everybody on the program. I know you're working, working hard to make it work.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Chad.
That'll bring us to item J1. Consider a resolution authorizing the Brazos Central Appraisal District Chief Appraiser or other staff to act as an agent in regard to filing a protest against the comptroller's 2022 preliminary property value study. Appeal for Coliseum I C is allowed by Texas Administrative Code, Section 9.4302. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Horak. You were afraid we were going to have a board meeting without hearing from Ms. Straz, aren't Ms. Straz is going to explain this particular item to you, how we'll delegate authority for the appraisal district to represent us in grieving values assigned by the comptroller.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale, Mr. Horak, members of the board. So some of you may remember during the budget development, I have said a couple of times when it was asked, well, how do we know the values are right? And I said, well, the comptroller does do a test of the values. So tonight, we're going to learn a little bit about what happens when that comptroller's test doesn't match our appraisal district. So first of all, it is required that the comptroller tests at least every two years the values of the appraisal district for school districts. Now, why do they do that? It's, it's very simple. There's a direct correlation in the property values per student that a district has and the amount of state revenue that the district receives. The higher your values per student, the lower state revenue you receive and vice versa. So there's a direct relationship. So the reason that they run this test is they're trying to ensure that the state funds for public aid are being distributed correctly and equitably among school districts based on their values. So for this particular year, we were reviewed. That review is, is based on a sample. They don't look at every single property, but they take that sample and then they correlate an estimate. So for 2022, our values came in at less than what the comptroller said that they should be. Now, it's not an exact number because it is a sample. So there is like a margin of error or a confidence level. They look at, are we 5% above or below the estimate that the comptroller came out to be? So for 2022, when we look at that, the values that the Brazos Central Appraisal District assigned to us is lower than that, that lowest confidence level or, or margin of error that we could have. So now what? What happens? So first of all, these are preliminary. Okay? So we are going to get an opportunity to review those values and see if we can find some error or misapplication based on the sample that they took, you know? And, and see if we can determine something and appeal that and ask them to relook at it. Okay? Sometimes we start looking at that and we can't find enough, that we can't find enough to get within that. And we don't have to get all the way to the value, we just have to get within that margin of error. Okay? So that's, that's one thing is we can appeal and hopefully we're successful. So if we're not successful or we can't find enough to get us in there, now what happens? So they have what they call year one of grace. It's kind of like it's two strikes you're out, not three strikes you're out. So the first time a district is outside of that confidence level and we're not successful in your appeal, or we just couldn't find enough to, to submit, so we don't appeal, we're still going to be assigned local values for our state calculation purposes. But we also will be evaluated or reviewed for the next two years. And we must come within that confidence level for the next two years. If we don't, we will be assigned state values. And just like what I said happens, if you're assigned state values, we're, we will be penalized because, in, in revenue, not, not a penalty assigned to us, but we'll be collecting taxes at a lower value and yet our state revenue or recapture will be awarded to us based on that higher value. So there's that difference. So hopefully that kind of explains what happened. So we will receive local values this year, whether we appeal and are successful or, or we're not successful, or we determine we just, we just can't get there. We will get our local values. We would rather appeal if we can and get that so we don't use our one year of grace. Because that way, we won't have the next two years and we won't have to worry about it, at least for a couple. So that's kind of where we're at.
So Ms. Straz, it appears as though this is a trend throughout the state this year for a large number of school districts, that the comptroller's offices sign greater values than local appraisal districts, correct? And, and if the comptroller's offices is signing greater value, you said this, I just, I'm, I'm summarizing, then the implications are such that you, in essence, as a school district, because if those higher assign local values through, from the comptroller's thing, but you would receive less state funding.
Correct.
That's correct?
Correct.
All right. Seems interesting. So seems interesting, but, so apparently our local appraisal district didn't assign high enough values.
That's correct.
As, as, according to the comptroller's office.
Comptroller's study, yes.
So the state has a moral hazard in the first place, but from reading the resolution, the Brazos Valley Appraisal District, they're on our side of the table. They're saying, they appraise, and they're, okay, so, so we're, okay.
Yes, so we can try, we can submit the appeal ourselves, although the appraisal district is much more knowledgeable of that data. So this resolution basically authorizes them to appeal on our behalf.
Have they done this, have you done this before? Have they done this before, Mr. Martindale?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
They have, they have done it before. So there, we have already requested our data from the state to see what sample it is that they took so that the appraisal district can start analyzing it. So we've requested the data and they're in the process of review. The issue is, is that this appeal is due on March 13th, so we don't have another board meeting. So tonight, it's my recommendation that we approve the resolution that will allow the appraisal district to appeal on our behalf, should we find enough information to do that.
If, if Brazos CAD fails, what skin in the game is it again?
None this year.
None this year.
You lose, you, you have a grace year.
Right.
It would become an issue if it happens again next year and we appeal and it's not resolved.
Next year.
Then you're assigned the higher comptroller values, which impacts the state revenue you would receive.
Which Brazos CAD's interest in that, what is their punishment for?
So for them, what is their incentive? First of all, it, you know, it's their job.
It's where the middle people are.
They want to do your job correctly and make sure you're in there. So that, that's the first thing. But if they, for the second time, fall out of that appeal, first of all, if they don't get in it this year, they're going to have audits for the next two years. And that's very time-consuming on them to be able to pull that material. But if we fail for two years in a row, or this year and two years later, they also will have a reviewer assigned to them that will be working with them directly from the state. Well, it would be if, two of them. So you get, we have that one year of grace. So if we don't use that one year of grace, if we use the one year of grace this year, we have to come in for the next year and the following. So they'll have two more years of auditors in their office. And if it happens again, then they will also have a reviewer assigned to them.
In previous appeals, is it a 50/50? Is it two-thirds chance? Is it?
You, you know, it can't really say. First of all, we'll be looking at the data to determine in what group of properties were out. Is it residential? Is it commercial? Is it minerals? Is it personal property? Rarely is it land, but is it land? So that will help determine, once you look at that, if we feel like we'll be successful. And then they'll start looking at that data.
That's what I'd be interested in is because, yeah, you can't resell a high school on the open market. So it's got a limited use.
But we're not taxable, so that's okay.
And this is one of those issues that, the underlying issue that I really wish the public understood more, and I honestly, I had no idea about it before I got on the school board, but that these, these convoluted layers of when it comes to school finance.
School funding.
Yeah, so.
I find it very interesting, the comptroller, that this is a trend around the state this year. Very interesting. It's interesting. Let's just look at that.
It's fairly coincidences, I'm sure.
So that being said, I move to approve the resolution authorizing the Brazos Central Appraisal District Chief Appraiser or their staff to act as an agent in regard to filing a protest of the comptroller's 2022 preliminary property value study as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Ben, seconded by Dr. Payne. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Bring us to J2. Consider approval for the purchase of computer lab upgrades across the district from Avanex based on Department of Information Resources Purchasing Cooperative Contract DIRTSO 4159 in the amount of $1,063,114 using 2021 bond funds. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Horak. With additional details on this request of purchase, Ms. Straz?
Thank you again. And this one will be a little more fun. We're going to spend some money. So with the 2021 bond program, there was a Proposition B, which was a little over $4.5 million. That proposition was specific to personal devices, personal technology devices. So previously, we brought to you requests of purchase teacher devices. We have purchased student devices across the district. But this one is looking at replacing or upgrading computer labs, and this will affect every campus across the district. So the technology department wrote the specifications and they solicited proposals from various vendors who are on purchasing cooperatives. So we did not have to put this out with a full bid, but we solicited proposals that way. And looking at that, we had two proposers. And of that, Avanex was considered the best value and also the low proposer in the amount of $1,063,114. And again, that would be with 2021 bond funds, Proposition B, if you so approve.
A motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Yeah.
All right. I have a first motion. I have, I had you.
That's fine, take me out.
Man. All right. I have it from Mr. Decker. I have a second by Dr. Payne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
And that will bring us to our last item, which we call adjournment.